This meeting is called to order. My name is Mayor Beverly H. Burks. And this is the April 2nd, 2024 Clarkson City Council Meeting. At this time, I will go through roll call. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Carroll.
Present.
Councilwoman Bill.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
And Councilman Perkins.
Present.
And I recognize our interim city manager, Tammy Sadler Jones. Are there any updates changed to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have an update.
Sure.
A move that we remove item 7A from the consent agenda, which is to approve referring the matter of status and appointment to the city council task forces to the, I think originally it was standing advisory committees, and add it as, I believe, new business, item 8F.
8F, okay.
A second.
All right. Or did you just want to change the name? Or we can just put the name on there?
I would be okay with that. That would really be the only purpose, so.
Okay.
Now, the only question would be, do we need to? Because we didn't specify, I think, making reappointments to a couple of the task forces, early learning, I think, in particular. Do we want to pull it to be able to make those appointments official? Or are we not ready for that?
I thought when we had that discussion, that we said we were just going to keep it as it was and then let the committee make the structural changes and then come back.
Okay. I just know that I think some of their appointments expired was the reason I was asking.
Okay. But if we don't do anything, they can still work in those roles.
I have to go back and look at the original resolution.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
We can, I can withdraw my motion then. And then we, I guess, do we need to fill that out for the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Or how would that?
So, Madam Clerk, would that help you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So if you want to go ahead and, for the sake of the consent agenda and making sure that we have everything in place to specify that committee? Because you were saying that based on the chart, the responsibilities, that that wouldn't fall under the Public Safety Committee.
Yes, Public Safety and Legal is specifically related to law enforcement and ordinances, penal ordinances specifically, and so community and civic engagement would be the committee that we would send it to.
Okay. All right, let's put that in. So I'll take your motion to do that.
All right. A motion that we, I guess, modify the consent agenda, item 7A, which reads approved, referring the matter of status and appointment to the, status appointment to the city council task forces to the blank standing advisory committee, and amend it to read approved, referring the matter of the status and appointment to the city council task forces to the community development and civic engagement standing advisory committee.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and properly seconded that we change item 7A in the consent agenda to refer to approve referring the matter of the status and appointment to the city council task forces to the community development and civic engagement, city engagement, standing advisory committee? Are there any other changes to it? Nope? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passed. So we'll proceed with the presentation and administrative business and ask to approve the following meeting minutes. And that would be, A, March 5th, 2024 city council meeting; B, March 26th, city council work session; C, and that would be March 26th executive session, executive meeting.
I have the motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I move to approve the following meeting minutes: March 5th, 2024 city council meeting; March 26th, 2024 city council work session; and March 26th, 2024 executive session meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded to approve the following meeting minutes: March 5th, city council meeting; March 26th, city council work session; and March 26th, executive session meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay, we have one abstention. Okay, thank you. We'll now move into reports, which would be the planning and economic and development report. Mrs. Cameron, please, thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Members, I just want to report tonight a couple of things, particularly to give an update from my department and the Public Works Department from the Transportation and Environmental Committee meeting. We've met to talk about the 13 recommendations about the triangle, I believe it's called the bracket triangle park. And basically, when we went down to actually do a review of the park, we came up with just two recommendations. And one of the recommendations is to keep, if you keep the park as it is, the city will need to install an irrigation system to distribute water when it's needed to the trees and plants. Because there's no irrigation system to help protect the trees and the plants. And if you do that, we talked about also, that means a water meter would have to be installed. So we haven't gone into any costs. We wanted to provide this information tonight so that you can, you know, discuss it, consider it, and give us more information. The second recommendation is to redesign the park like the one that is on Church Street and have the type of vegetations that are there, similar. Also add the impervious areas so that, or pervious area, so that it would be accessible for all. Because as it is now, the bracket triangle park, you can't, it's not accessible to everyone. But the recommendation for, the second recommendation for the park to be, to be designed like the one that's on Church Street, will provide for access for everyone. The, another, another report is that we are designing a Clarkson 101 program to equip residents and business owners and partners with tools of, number one, resident becoming leaders of our communities, particularly targeting our young people, and then also informing our partners how to do business in the city as well as bring our business partners together. And the third thing I want to bring to the attention of our leaders is that the monument sign that's on Church Street that the church actually installed, the, we did have a meeting with the representative and the pastor, of course, thought that everything was okay. So we're meeting with the pastor and the sign company so that we can correct the issues that are presently at hand. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Yes, I have one quick question.
Sure.
I was, I think former council member Yasu met with y'all. So I'm not familiar with what was discussed. But one of the things that we discussed in the committee meeting was the issue of making sure that that triangle park was ADA compliant.
Right.
And that even if we just leave it as is and put the watering system in and the meter, has anybody reached out to anybody about what was needed to make that park ADA compliant?
So out of the 13 recommendations, we categorize, we put them all into about four categories. As the park stands now, if you put an irrigation system in it, it's going to make it more inaccessible for, you know, people who can't access it by wheelchair. Because right now, there's nothing that, that's nothing that support a mobile type of vehicle, nothing. It's, it's all mulch. If you can't walk, there's no other way to get in.
Okay. Well, that was one specific request of the committee.
Absolutely.
High on the list.
Right.
So what do we need, if we're not going to make wholesale changes in that park, what do we need to do to make it ADA compliant?
We need to do exactly what we did to the one on Church Street, and we need to put pervious surface in there. That's the only way that you have access.
Okay. We need to speak about this offline because we need someone.
And we can, and we will do that. That's the reason why we're bringing these recommendations to you, so that it can be discussed and we can come back. You can tell us, you know, whether we need to get that priced out, because we have not priced out anything. We want to bring this information to you.
So let me make sure I'm clear. Because this was charged even though Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Yasu is no longer on council to the Environment Committee. And so Susan, by default, is the vice chair. Now she would be the chair.
Okay.
Did the two of you meet or did the committee meet to do what you're talking about now?
No. So we met with Councilman Yasu weeks ago. And, and based on that, is when we, when the Public Works Director and I went out to review the 13 recommendations. And based on that, this is what we're reporting back. So we have not gone back to anyone. I was under the impression that we bring it to the board, to the council. And maybe that was, you know, that was me not getting that information to him.
Okay.
So if we need to bring it back to the account, to the committee?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I appreciate that follow-up. So we'll follow up.
It's just a concern that one of our highest priorities isn't addressed in either of these.
Well, it, it, well, it is, but you can't just address one thing without addressing all of it. So again, the recommendation is, number one, what we recommend that would be most feasible would be either to make the park the exact same way as we have it on Church Street, or we need to add, you know, irrigation system that's going to protect everything. Because we're not, we're not just talking about one thing, because, you know, one, one item affects the other item. So if you add an irrigation system there, say for example, it's wet, you're not gonna, you know, someone that's, that can't assess it by walking, by legs, won't be able to assess it by a wheelchair. If it's not wet, they won't be able to get, if they go in, they won't be able to get out, because right now, like I say, it's mulch. The pathway is probably not wide enough for a wheelchair. So we will have to make it accessible, but you're going to be putting a lot of money in it. We can get that. We just want to know at this point how far we go. Because when you start doing project management work, as you know, it's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
And, and Ms. Cameron, what the council charged Yasu with was coming up with a plan to present to us.
Okay, okay.
So your recommendation, if you could draw something up for us, we would be honored.
Okay.
Because we would like to fulfill what we started, because the park does need attention.
Okay.
And your recommendation is nice, because I like that park as well.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to be uniform throughout the city.
Absolutely. Okay, so we will, we'll bring a, we'll bring a plan, we'll bring two options, option A and option B.
I'll let Councilwoman Bill answer that, make her comment.
So my only comment is, we said that this will go back to committee.
Okay.
They will work with city staff on coming up with a plan.
Right.
And so I think that there is some more work and deliberation that needs to occur before we can even get here. But I do think that, I mean, I appreciate y'all making a recommendation, but y'all weren't supposed to have the whole, all of the work on y'all.
Right.
It was supposed to have been a collaboration between the committee, and that's what we tasked him with before we even had any more discussions, but.
Oh, okay.
It seems like there needs to be more work done.
Yeah, so that's why we say thank you both for going out.
Okay.
I would recommend, especially because we had that committee and they were looking forward to following up and having best practices and recommendations and proposed renderings and some other pieces to it and a budget to it as well. We love for you to continue that work and especially working with the Environment Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me ask one question. So when you said renderings, do we want to get a budget to? Because when we started doing renderings, we, we're talking about, you know, funds to, to provide all this information, so.
So what you can do is definitely work with the committee.
Okay.
And then, as you may mention, you gave suggestions of the Church Street, which we should already have pretty much that design.
Okay.
Because it's almost a triangular shape in itself, the way it's structured.
Okay.
So the other piece was to identify best practices. So if you're saying that based on the structure of that, that it's best to not go from the fruit trees, to go to something else, we need all of that.
Okay.
And so I don't want to belabor this, because it was just supposed to be a report.
Wonderful.
And so thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Interim City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. In the spirit of talking about parks, I did want to give a report about the Smith Street Park, which is a city park. Ms. Cameron and I met over the last few weeks with Will Johnston, the CEO of Microlife. And he understands the importance and the city's desire to have that particular park represent the rendering that was previously submitted to the city. And so he will be working with a group of volunteers to begin to put those plans into motion. It's my understanding they're going to do it around Earth Day, which is somewhere between April 20th, 21st, 22nd timeframe. They also, our Public Works Department, we also met with him about two weeks ago to discuss using some of the granite over at Friendship Forest to do some benches, seating or benches in that particular part. So we will continue to provide you with an update as those plans unfold. I did also want to make the public aware that we have a food giveaway this coming Saturday, April the 6th. New location, I repeat, new location. And that's going to be here at City Hall, located at 3921 Church Street. It will begin at 10:00 a.m. We are having to change our location due to the fact that the city was not given approval to hold its food drive over at Tahoe Village Shopping Center, like we have done in the past. We have 300 boxes of food, and so it will be on a first come, first served basis for those in need. So we encourage the public to come out. So again, that's going to be Saturday, April the 6th, at 10 o'clock a.m., and it will be until supplies last. I did want to also remind the public that the City of Clarkston has partnered with the Decab Probono to offer free legal services to low-income tenants facing a variety of housing issues. You can get help with repairs and maintenance, unlawful evictions, and unreturned deposits. We encourage you to reach out to the Decab Probono at 470-386-9979. Also, I want to remind the public that our Juneteenth event has been scheduled to occur on Saturday, June the 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's going to be held at Market Village. So we have a lot of events that are going to be planned for that day. We want to thank our staff, who have been very diligent about getting this event off the ground and running as far as the planning. So we encourage you to stay tuned to our city website and also to our social media. And last but not least, we would encourage all of our vendors who are interested in serving as a vendor for our Juneteenth celebration. Please contact Mr. Jacob Bouie at J.B.O.U.I.E. at cityofclarkston.com, or Yolanda McGee at Y.M.C.G.E.E. at cityofclarkston.com. And June 15th is going to be a very busy day, because we also have a food giveaway that we will be holding on that day. It will begin at 10:00 a.m., but of course, we will provide more information as that date gets closer. So we encourage you to continue to focus on our website and focus on our social media. Thank you so much.
Okay. And then we'll move on to council remarks, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the pleasure on March 15th to attend the City Council Retreat. It was wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Tammy, for all that preparation you put into that. And then on March 21st, I had the pleasure of attending the Iftar Dinner at the Masjid right here on Indian Creek. That was interesting as well. I got to see a lot of my colleagues and community leaders. On March the 23rd, I had the pleasure of attending with Women's Watch Africa, the Celebration of Women event. It was a very nice cultural fashion show, and it was conducted by young kids. They were beautiful. They represented each nationality that they came from, and they gave us a description of their garments. So it was really nice. And that's it. I just encourage everyone to come out to the food giveaway on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. And that's my report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Carroll.
Yes, so we had a Housing Infrastructure Committee meeting in early March, which we discussed some different housing issues, including additional protections for tenants and information to give them, and that was productive. And on March 15th, I also attended the council retreat. It was a very productive meeting. On March 31st, with the mayor, I attended the Iftar Rongga Dinner. That was very productive. And also, and also on April 1st, we had another Housing Infrastructure and Transportation Environment Joint Meeting, which we discussed various SPOLOs projects that are going to be presented, and that will hopefully be presented to the council for approval at the next meeting. And lastly, I would like to wish a happy Easter to those that celebrated as Easter was this past Sunday. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Bill?
Yeah, so I also attended the city retreat. So thank you for all the city staff work with that. In addition to that, accepted the Community Partners Award given to us by the Decab Probono with the mayor. And also have met with some youth in regards to an apartment complex that they thought that they were helping that was inside the City of Clarkston, but it's right outside. So just trying to figure out how we can continue to expand that partnership, because they were giving hygiene products to families in need in that particular apartment complex and trying to figure out how can they serve in the city limits. And then, last but not least, I know that we just voted in the presidential primaries, but we do have Georgia State primaries that are coming up. And so you can go ahead and get registered to vote before April 22nd, as well as go ahead and request your mail-in ballot. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, and Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, no report.
Okay, and Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I also attended the City Council Retreat on March 15th. And again, just wanted to say thank you to our staff and Mr. McPherson, Mr. Jacobs from the Georgia Municipal Association, just for all the hard work that you all put into planning, when I feel it was a really productive day. So your work does not go unnoticed. I also had the pleasure of attending the Community Iftar Celebration on March 21st at Masjid Al-Mudamin. And so also wanted to extend my thanks to Mr. Sheikhay and Mr. Al-Suliman, just for that invitation. And again, you know, Ramadan Mubarak to the Muslim members of our community. And also, as Councilman Carroll noted, to those who celebrate Easter, a happy Easter to you as well. Just wanted to remind everyone, keep their eyes on the weather this evening. There have been some reports of inclement weather coming, so just stay safe out there. It's supposed to roll in pretty early, from my understanding, pretty late, depending on when it hits. But just wanted to remind everyone to take care.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Perkins. And I'll move into my report. I, again, want to thank the staff for doing an excellent job with the retreat. We really appreciate all the work that you went through to make sure we can move forward with the city, and so thank you for that. I also attended the Women's Watch Africa event, participated in the award ceremony with Decab Probono, attended the mosque Ramadan, the Community Ramadan at Refuge Coffee, the Burmese Rongga Community Ramadan Celebration. I attended on Good Friday, the YMCA's breakfast, and they have been one of the partners to provide swimming lessons for many of the residents at Marlin Park. And so I was able to connect with our partners there. Attended both of the infrastructure, housing and infrastructure meetings, and also participated with the Black Mayors Coalition on Crime. And so they had some very important things in Memphis, and I want to thank Mayor Young, who brought us together, because again, most crimes do not have borders, and that, you know, we have to collectively work together and come up with some proactive approaches. And so I'm looking forward to having those additional conversations with the city manager and our, our chief to bring insight to some of the information, especially where they've had some class action suits dealing with Kia and Hyundai, and see how we can help support many of our community members here. And also, just as a quick reminder, we will have the mayor's, the Tots Town Hall. And so that is something that we do on a quarterly basis for our children under six years old, to educate them on our democracy. And so the next one will be April 15th, from 10 to 11, I mean, 10 to 12, and it will be in the city, city hall chambers. And so we're trying to make sure that we start that next generation to be more mindful of what it means in terms of democracy and their rights. And it's, it's a wonderful opportunity to let the children participate. And again, as Councilwoman Bill brought up about voting in our primary, we want to make sure that you also recognize that the Clarkston Library is a early voting precinct. And so we want to make sure that we encourage everyone to go there and utilize it. And so you have something within walking distance from your homes for many of us. So please encourage your fellow residents to participate with that as well. With that being said, we will move into public comments. And any member of the public may address the council during the allotted, the time allotted for public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes, and it is not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. Do we have anyone signed up for comments?
We do. Eric Davis?
Good evening. I'm back again. I was here, I think, last year sometime. I'm still trying to address the street 34, where I live on 3444, Castle Woods Lane. They have a hole in the street. Come June, I'll be there 30 years, 30 years. And this street still haven't got paved, but one time in 30 years. That was back in the nineties. I brought this up the last time I was here. Nothing happened done. I talked to, who, one of the ladies, did I talk to you, Mayor? I didn't?
No.
About the apartment complex behind me. I had the police, they, I caught some people back there. I already now have nine cameras, I think I'm going to get nine more, because I'm trying to catch anybody that come on Castle Woods Lane. Okay? Because I see the police don't come back there probably once a month. Okay? I have cameras. I see whether I'm at home or where I'm at work, I have the cameras on. So I'm trying to find out, is anybody going to do anything about the hole in the street that's on Castle Woods and Jolly Street right up here? It looked like, like I, first time, the backwoods in Mississippi where I'm from. Okay? So I don't know when y'all, who can I talk to, or do something about it or what?
So we'll make sure with the city manager that we'll do the follow-up. We do have a list of projects in terms of pavement, so we do have that in terms of the follow-up. We got the SPOLOs 2 money, which will help us make sure we can do the necessary pavements for those streets. So to follow up to that piece, make sure you reach out to our interim city manager, Ms. Jones.
Well, do you have my number, address? You have my email address?
I do not. I have a phone number.
I have a phone number on the sheet, but I do not have an email address.
Yeah, but, but you can call that number from, that's this phone right here.
Okay.
If you have, call my office. It's four oh four, two nine four, four eight seven eight. Leave a message, and I'll get back. The last time I was here, everybody reaching me a card. Ain't heard from nobody since.
Okay, well, we gonna make sure you gonna see some streets. How about that?
Okay.
All right.
I hope that happened because I'm retiring January, and I'll be up here a lot.
Okay, well, we looking forward to seeing you. All right, come on.
Can you repeat your, the address of the issue, please?
Could you repeat the, where you stay on CASA?
Thirty-four, forty-four CASA, Castle Woods Lane, Clarkston, Georgia. Come June, I'll be thirty years I've been there.
Okay.
Yeah. But just, I leave my number, email, just give me a call, and I'll get back with you.
She got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We got Sean, is it Waters?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Sean Waters, and I live on Nielsen Drive in Norman, across the street from Mylan Park. Last Friday night, early Saturday morning at midnight, shots rang out behind my home from an automatic weapon that was parked on Norman Avenue. The next morning, around eleven AM, I went to the spot on Norman Road where I saw the shooting. Right there, I found about thirty shell casings. Later that day, Clarkson Police Officers came by my home. I gave them a written statement and the shell casings, and showed them where the incident happened. This isn't the first shooting in and around Mylan Park. In late March two thousand twenty-three, there was another shooting involving a stolen car. Gun violence is a serious issue. In two thousand twenty-two, there were over forty-eight thousand firearm-related deaths in the United States, which means about a hundred and thirty people die from firearm injuries every day. More than seven out of ten medically-treated firearm injuries are from assaults. As someone who works in public health, I'm dedicated to reducing deaths and improving health outcomes. We need to address gun violence in our communities, sure. But I also urge Clark, Clarkson Law Enforcement and the Cab County at large, the public officials, to do everything they can to keep our community safe and bring those who endanger our neighborhoods to justice. Thank you, Chief Hudson, for coming by my home earlier today and reassuring myself and neighbors. Good evening.
Thank you. Did we have anyone else signed up?
No, that wasn't Mayor.
Okay, thank you all for your comments tonight. We'll now move into old business. There is none, but then we'll proceed into the consent agenda. And so, for those who may be new to council meetings, we have a work session on Tuesdays. And so, during the work session, we review agenda items. And if there is no further deliberation on those agenda items, we put those on consent agenda for one vote from the council members. And so, at this time, I would entertain a motion as it relates to the items in the consent area. And I would like the council member who does the motion to read each one of the items for, for the record.
Madam Mayor, I have a question on clarity first, and I'm happy to bring a motion. So, I missed this when I was proposing an amendment to the agenda earlier. I just want, for clarity's sake, I'm noticing item seven B is to adopt ordinance number four ninety-five to the city charter, to amend the city charter, or by the City of Clarkston to amend the city charter, authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city. There's another ordinance that's listed as new business. It's also four ninety-five. I just want to make sure I'm looking at this correctly. Those are two separate ones, or is that?
It's the same one.
It appears updated for the second, the one that's not consent. This new business has this anti-stringing requirement, which we asked for.
Right.
And that seven B doesn't. So, I think we may want to take seven B off the consent agenda and then just discuss it under eight A.
Okay, let's do that.
Well, that's where my, my point, my question is, is just making sure. Because I know we had to, at first, there's a second reading of the original ordinance that would allow us to adopt an ordinance that would set the parameters for the city manager to be able to make purchases. And so, is that the new business agenda item, or is that what's in the consent agenda?
And city manager, I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Madam Mayor?
Who's, who, yes. Oh, hey, yes, how are you today? Yes, Mr. Quinn is-
Thank you, how are you?
Mr. Quinn is not in today, and, but he did not leave us. We have-
He did not.
He, we have wonderful, one of his associates, and please introduce yourself. And I'm sorry, I heard your name. I heard you calling. I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. My name is Irene Vanderell, and I work with Stephen Quinn at Wilson Morton and Downs. He is out of town this week and has asked me to cover for him during this meeting. And so, here I am to do that. I am new to Wilson Morton and Downs, but not new to practicing law. I've been practicing for over twenty years, so. And I just wanted to note with respect to this agenda item or the two in question, there are actually two separate ordinances that the council has before them to consider. Seven B, ordinance number four nine five, relates to the city manager's authority to enter into contracts on behalf of the city. There's a separate ordinance that Stephen has prepared, which I think had been assigned, ordinance number four nine six, which relates to the purchasing policy and procedure in general, specifically the competitive bidding process. And I understand that that one may be ready for discussion, but not for adoption. So, that the council can adopt four nine five related to the city manager's contracting authority that is in the consent agenda.
Okay. It's true.
The problem is that they're both labeled four nine five in our packet. That's one problem. The other problem is that anti-stringing, that, that part was not in front of us when we did a consent.
Right, so we can-
So, I, I think it'd be better to move B into new business.
Okay, so let's do this.
And discuss it.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna move in your motion. We're gonna remove B. And so, keep going down the list. That's why we wanted you to go through each one through the list.
Do you want me to move seven B to new business, or do you want me to just skip it on the consent agenda?
You can't, we're, we're gonna have it under consent, I mean, under the regular agenda item.
So, two motions, and first, move it to you.
Yes.
Second, approve consent.
Got it.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, my first motion is that we move item seven B to adopt ordinance number four ninety-five by the City of Clarkston to amend the city charter and to author, to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city to item eight G, new business.
Okay. Eight G?
No, we already have an eight F.
F, okay.
Already got an F, because we moved the SACs.
We didn't, we didn't move it.
I apologize. To eight F.
Eight F, okay. Is there a second? Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that we move from the consent agenda, item seven B, adopt ordinance number four nine five by the City of Clarkston to amend the city charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city to item new business eight F. Is there any discussion? Ready for the question? And, and part of this is, you know, we want to make sure in terms of things that we added, that we have a chance to talk about that, and it's not in the consent. So, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, yes?
So, just a point of clarity, to make sure I understand. So, I know we discussed both of them last week, right? But when I look at the language for eight A, that looks very similar to what I think we discussing in seven B. So, if somebody could tell me the difference, or if there's additional addendum to this agenda that I need to have? But that looks the same to me. No?
Eight A is the procuring.
Oh, the new procurement policy?
Right, it's the procurement that we didn't-
Seven B is just giving the city manager authority to contract for up to twenty-five thousand under certain conditions.
But, but-
It should be four ninety-six. It's labeled four nine five on that, but it should be four ninety-six.
Four ninety-six.
So, eight, eight A is about changing procurement policies. Seven B is just about allowing the city manager contract for up to twenty-five thousand by not changing the procurement policy.
Oh, yeah, this was the confusion of the work session.
Now, now I think it has been straightened out, as long as you move seven B back to-
And call it four ninety-six instead of four nine five.
Right, four ninety-six. Okay.
And one, one relates, the first one relates to the charter.
Right.
The second one to the code.
Code.
And unfortunately, on our latest version of eight A, the, the ordinance number was incorrect. The first one is four nine five, the second one is four nine six. So, that just-
That threw everything off, so, okay?
Proceed on.
All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay? Motion passed. All right, so, we've moved the item from consent. And just as a point of clarity, even though we may have said at the work session, we're gonna put all these wonderful things in consent, at any given time, before we actually go through the process, the council member has an opportunity to withdraw something from the consent agenda if that person wants to have additional comments, or as you've seen what we've done today. So, I just want to make sure so that people understand what happened, what's going on. We start off with saying, okay, we agree on something. Something may change, and council members have the right to do that. And so, I just want to make sure from understanding this process and letting people understand what's happening, that you understand where we're going with this component of it. So, with that being said, we'll now move for the motion for consent agenda with each item identified.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Um, I move that we approve our consent agenda to contain items seven A, to approve the referring of the matter of the status and appointment to the City Council Task Forces to the Community Development and Civic Engagement Standing Advisory Committee. Item seven C, to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero one six by the Clarkson City Council to declare a vacancy in the office of the council, of the council and member, and to call a special called election to fill the unexpired term of former council member Awet Yasu. Item seven D, to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero one seven, authorizing, among other things, amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three operating budget from twelve million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars to twelve million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Item seven E, to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero one eight to approve a renewed contract with Sears Pool Management Consultants Incorporated in the amount of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to be funded out of the parks budget for lifeguard and pool management services for Mylan Pool. Item seven F, to approve resolution number two zero two four dash zero one nine to declare certain vehicles to be surplus property. Item seven G, to approve a contract with Russell Landscaping for Street Scape Right-Away Mowing and CSX Right-Away Mowing in the amount of seventy thousand dollars to be funded out of the four zero dash four zero 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 dash five two three one four zero. Item seven H, to approve the purchase of white and yellow roadway reflectors to be installed on a section of East Ponce de Leon to improve traffic safety in the amount of ten thousand dollars to be funded out of SPOLOs. Item seven I, to approve resolution number two zero two four dash zero two zero designating the city clerk as open records officer. And item seven J, to approve resolution number two zero two four dash zero two one designating Georgia Cities Week from April twenty-first to April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded to approve items seven A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J in the consent agenda. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of approving the items in the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. I don't have to say any nays, because it has to be everyone that says yes. Okay? So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that piece. Now, we're moving into new business. And new business starts off with item eight A, which is to approve an ordinance number, and this one probably should be nine, four nine six, amending chapter two of the city code, it's four nine, it's four, I'm sorry, four nine five, amending chapter two of the city code regarding administration to delegate to the city manager the authority to purchase goods and services and to enter into contracts on behalf of the city, subject to certain conditions and limitations. And, and I think from that one, we had interim city manager Jones, you gonna defer that, or you gonna have?
Yes, ma'am. I'll defer it to our city attorney's office, but I did want to make sure that, to know, we just asking for you all to discuss this, not take action tonight.
Right, right. So, this is only for discussion. This was not something in terms of, we had it as far as the agenda from last week. We will have more discussion. If you want to just go ahead and, and just move forward with this one, we can. But I want to make sure in terms of the action for tonight, it's nothing in terms of us actually voting on this item. All right, we're gonna have from the office to provide us additional information. Irene? Is she set up? Yes?
Madam Mayor, I believe that this item is ordinance four nine six. And the one that we took off-
Is four nine five?
Is four nine five.
Right. And yes. Did you have any additional discussion on that piece? Yes?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes.
Just to, uh, just to clarify again, my understanding of the agenda for new business is that item eight A was the procurement policy-
Right.
That was the next four nine six, but is not ready for adoption, but may be ready for discussion among the council tonight.
Right.
The new item eight F would be the city manager purchasing authority, which is ready for adoption if the council is ready, if that's the council's pleasure.
Right, and so, so just for clarity, it should be four nine six for item eight A?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yes, and go ahead, Councilwoman Bell.
I just have a question, and this may be for attorney. We're reading, we're having this discussion because I think due to the charter, we're required to read this twice, right? Before we can do anything and take an action on that. Is that true? I think that's what Stephen mentioned.
Yes, with regard to the city manager's purchasing authority, that requires the adoption, reading and adoption at two meetings. I understand that it has been read and adopted. Number four nine five has been read and adopted at the March meeting. And so, if it is adopted again tonight, then it will be effective to amend the chart. If you want to make any changes to four nine five, then it would just need to be adopted again at the next two meetings.
Right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think it would be very helpful to clarify our discussions, to distinguish one of these changes, our code, is my understanding that is, that is eight A. And that's the one, four nine six, that we're gonna discuss tonight, but take no action. The other amends our charter. And the language between the two is very similar.
Right.
And the one that amends the charter is four nine five. It was on consent agenda, and how has been put on our new business? And if, am I correct that we can approve that tonight, and that would be considered the second reading on a charter amendment?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yes, yes.
So, just, when we're discussing these, let's talk code change versus the charter numbers.
Right, and, but the other piece to that, Councilwoman Hood, is that for eight A, that one is that we don't have a procurement process at all. And so, that, to your point, is where the code piece is. For the first one, that for tonight's purposes is just simply for discussion. Then the eight F would- Then the eight F would be the one that we moved from consent agenda that we will have the second reading, and then that in itself is a charter change. Okay. Yes, and Councilwoman Carol?
So I know we're probably, we're not adopting eight tonight, but I do think it's a logical policy to change the requirement to advertise newspaper. It's kind of a useless cost. It's a legal artifact from when the county newspaper was the main source of news for most people to look at, and just in the modern internet age, that's not where people take bids for contracts.
Right.
So I, I think it's logical to make this change and said post it on the city website and the Georgia Procurement Registry, which is where the city actually gets bids for the contracts. So really, you know, as much as we may like the Decap Champion, there's no reason to give them tax dollars for nothing.
Right.
So I, I think this is a logical change that we can hopefully pass next month.
Right, and just so you know, the way it's structured now, this hasn't been changed since, what, the nineties? At all, and so, uh, before you have the need to post this type of information in the champion, as you mentioned. And so this is to go back through our actual documents to see where we need to make the updates and changes so that, um, it's relevant in terms of the time, making sure in terms of the things that we need to have accomplished, that the city manager is able to do that with restrictions in terms of doing the reporting back to the council on what is happening. So all of those things are included in terms of this actual, um, in terms of, of the restrictions and purchasing, but we have not done a procurement process. We, we don't have a procurement process. And so we've moved from a small city to a medium city, right? And as we've grown, our policies need to also align with that as well. And thankfully, you know, we're all going through this from a council perspective to address those needs so that instead of us having ten agenda items, that we can ensure that the, uh, city manager can follow a process. So from a procurement, this is any questions that you may need to have or you want to address in terms of for next council meeting, because this will be on the agenda for next council. This is simply just a placeholder to make sure in terms of this whole discussion that we have from introducing the charter change to the ordinance that we do both. Any other? Okay, if hearing none, then we, we can go ahead and make sure in terms of next month's, next month's agenda, this will be on next month's agenda. Um, if you have any discussion or any points from that point, um, please make sure that you, uh, make sure in terms of staff having that additional discussion. I see Councilwoman Hood's finger up, yes.
Um. This item, relative to changing the code, we have a, a newer version and an older version, and they're quite different. The newer version is very new. And, uh, at this point, because we just got this, or at least I just got this, I'm really not in a position to discuss much because these two things are so different.
Right.
And I would have to go back and compare and contrast and see the source, et cetera. So, uh, I hope that perhaps at work session, uh, when this item comes up for our next council meeting, that we can, that there will be more information.
And then you can also take the time to have a conversation with the city manager and staff to make sure in terms of any concerns that you have prior to the meeting, that those can be addressed because if you have those kind of concerns, it may be concerns for the rest of the council. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none for this particular item, we'll move on from this item. And then we'll go on to item B, which is adopt ordinance number four nine seven to repeal existing and adopt new Article Three of Chapter Five of the city code regarding floodplain management and flood damage prevention. And so with that one, is that Ms. Cameron?
Um, well, actually, it's the city attorney that could be presenting.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, that, that would be, um, Stephen actually wrote up the ordinance, and I thought the city, uh, I'll defer that to the city attorney to read.
Yes, okay, so we can have that in terms of, there you are.
Hello.
Okay.
So this, uh, ordinance, as I understand it, is, um, uh, I want to make sure that I'm looking at the right one before I tell you. So, uh, this, uh, as I understand it, is to, uh, adopt, um, what is required by state law uh, in terms of floodplain management and flood damage protection. We're just, um, repealing the existing ordinance, which was also in compliance with state law, and replacing it with the new language of the new state law. It's just a technical requirement of state law with respect to, um, uh, stormwater management requirements.
Yes, Ms. Cameron.
And, and Madam Mayor and, and councilmembers, um, I, I referred from, um, reviewing that ordinance because when I looked in our code, it, it is public works. And so it was out of my department, so I just, um, stayed in my lane.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Hood.
Um, Lisa.
Ms. Cameron.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, do you know if anything in this new ordinance that we must adopt conflicts with any of our regulations, whether that, whether that's zoning or whether it is public works or anything else?
Um, so not conflict, but does not reference parts that needs to be in the zoning code. Once, uh, the, once it's adopted, we will, uh, make sure that we reference the parts in the code that needs to go into zoning and public works. We will definitely.
So, nothing conflicts, but you will be doing, uh, changes to code to make sure that this information is properly reflected where it needs to be.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'll take a motion for this particular item.
Um, I move to approve item eight B, adopt ordinance four nine seven to repeal existing and adopt new Article Three of Chapter Five of the city's code regarding floodplain management and flood damage prevention.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve the ordinance number four nine seven to repeal existing and adopt new Article Three of the Chapter Five of the city code regarding floodplain management and flood damage prevention. Is there any further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass. And then we'll move on to item eight C, which is to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash two two to allocate an amount not to exceed sixty thousand from the SPOST fund to demolish the Forty Oaks Nature Preserve House. Pull that one up. Who do we have next to that one? What do we have next to that? No, I'm like, who, I was trying to figure out who's going to present on that one. Okay.
Larry?
Larry? Okay. All right, Mr. Kaiser.
I do not have my extensive three-page memo in front of me, so I'm going to.
So you're going to cut it down?
I'm going to spend thirty seconds on this. So the cost to renovate, remediate, and all the other unknowns when you try to repair a house that's built in nineteen oh one and has been changed and added on to at least four times from seventy-five to nineteen ninety, that cost is about seventy-five percent of the cost to rebuild. That does not take in consideration, as I think I mentioned before, all the unknowns associated with, once you start taking down the walls, flooring, ceiling, who knows what else, as we experienced with the city and next building, uh, which is obviously a different animal altogether. The city and next building has some value to it, didn't have any additions to it. It was more historic than the farmhouse, unfortunately. Uh, and so my recommendation, staff recommendation, would be to remove, demolish, uh, remove the septic tank system, utilities, everything that's out there, uh, associated with that building, and start afresh.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the resolution number two zero two four dash two two to allocate an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars from the SPOST fund to demo, to mo, to demolish the Forty Oaks Nature Preserve Farmhouse.
Okay, it's been seconded, is there a second? Okay, all right. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve and to, to adopt a resolution number two zero two four dash two two to allocate an amount not to exceed sixty thousand from the SPOST fund to demolish the Forty Oaks Nature Preserve Farmhouse. And so from a discussion, we talked about this in our housing and infrastructure. As part of this, what we also want to make sure that global growers, um, may have some people with a garden that we connect with them to make sure, especially because when we're doing this, there may be, there's going to be debris and asbestos, and so we don't want them to start that whole process of gardening and then, and interfere with what they're doing in terms of those plants. So we definitely want to make sure all partners that have utilized the area, that we do the connection is in, in tandem with what we're doing with this. Mr. Kaiser?
There's also the old septic tank system that's on the site. And global growers, and this has been going on for years now, it's not recent. They have a couple of their raised beds over top the old septic tank system and the tank. And so we'll have to coordinate with them to be sure that they move their plants to someplace else as that excavation occurs, and of course, they can put it back when we're done.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, council? Yes, Councilwoman Carol?
I mean, I don't think anyone in the council is happy about this, happy to destroy it. It is historic home that's been there a long time, but I think given its condition, it's necessary at this point, and hopefully can be replaced by something that'll be more useful to community, some sort of community center, that we can get community feedback on what they'd like to see in that place instead.
Yes, Councilwoman Bell.
Yeah, the only thing I'm going to say is something I said at the work session, if there's any way that we can do a plaque for, to commemorate the historic farmhouse that was there, um, so I don't want to mess that up in us demolishing it. I know that that's an action, but I hope that'll go to Housing and Infrastructure Committee to think through.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that we talked about was, since they're going to be interconnected, making sure in terms of the RFP, in terms of recommendations, that we look not only at Forty Oaks, but how we look at both Forty Oaks and Mylon Park together in terms of possibilities of what we can do with both of those parcels collectively. Yes, Councilwoman Bell?
You know, I was just thinking about it, historic and preservation, we do have that committee that this could also go to for an idea as well. So I just want to put that out there, and we had discussion in regards to it, but I do think we need to think of something to commemorate the space as we continue to figure out as a community what it needs to look like in the next phase.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments from the council?
Um, I would just add that I totally agree with Councilmember Bell. I think it would be very important to at least have a plaque, uh, recognize the long history of that property.
Right, okay, thank you. And also to make sure in terms of any, there have been some films and other things that were done at that house, and that was part of that discussion with the County Film Association, that we also have markers for that as well when we're doing all of the preservation information. So with that, is any other discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor to adopt a resolution number two zero two four dash two two to allocate an amount not to exceed sixty thousand from the SPOST fund to demolish the Forty Oaks Nature Preserve Farmhouse, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass. We'll now move to item eight D, which is an, adopt an ordinance number four nine eight to amend Chapter sixteen of the city code regarding streets to enact a street name change procedure. And then Ms. Cameron.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Um, as you know, that this is a, a process and, and procedure for doing a name change in regards to Ms. Pat Davis. And also from now on, and I, I will defer the rest of it to the city attorney so that they can read the ordinance.
Okay.
Hello, uh, the ordinance is intended to, um, provide essentially a roadmap for implementation, application, and then implementation of a street name change. It just sets out the, uh, application process, um, notice requirements, um, to affected residents, uh, property owners, the postal service, to other public service providers, um, for a name change.
Okay, I'll take a motion at this time. Councilwoman Bell? Nope, okay, anyone had a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Okay.
I move to adopt ordinance number four nine eight to amend Chapter sixteen of the city's code regarding streets to enact a street name change procedure.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt an ordinance number four nine eight to amend Chapter sixteen of the city code regarding streets to enact a street name change procedure. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Bell?
So my only question, and I guess it's to the city attorney, the initial resolution that was signed last year, what happens with that one? The resolution that specifically had the community street and then the new name of the subdivision? Does, is that removed altogether, and we just focus on the procedure? Is that still a resolution, but now has a procedure that you can enact it with?
My understanding is that the resolution remains in place, and this new, um, ordinance will, uh, give a guideline to staff to implement that resolution for the name change that was passed last year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor to adopt ordinance number four nine eight to amend Chapter sixteen of the city code regarding streets to enact a street name change procedure, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass. And now we'll move on to item eight E, which is to adopt a resolution number two zero two four dash two zero two three repealing council chambers' capacity limit, and that will go to our city attorney, Ms. Irene?
Yes, this, uh, resolution, uh, essentially removes the, um, or raises the limit on seating capacity in the council chambers to seventy-five, which I understand is the, uh, limit set by the fire marshal. During the COVID-nineteen emergency, um, the meetings were conducted, uh, via Zoom, and then, uh, returned to in-person meetings last year, uh, while there were still some, uh, uh, COVID numbers going up, the decision was made, uh, to, uh, limit the capacity of the council chambers to thirty. And, uh, my understanding is that the council is now ready to lift that limit altogether and return to the normal limits that would apply for the facility.
Yes, okay, yes.
I have a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash two, I'm sorry, dash zero two three repealing the council chambers' capacity limit.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero two three repealing council chamber capacity limits. Is there any further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero two three repealing council chamber capacity limits, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass. We'll go back to item, um, eight F, which is to adopt ordinance number four nine five by the city of Clarkston to amend the city charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city. And so we'll have the city attorney to discuss this one. Yes.
That's it, I think the wrong version is in the packet.
Okay.
So I was, I was looking back, um, and, uh, trying to figure out if I was the confused one or not. The, and so I guess a question for our attorney. Um, first, my understanding is in order for this charter change to pass, we have to approve the same resolution at two consecutive council meetings. Am I correct in my understanding of that, or is it just discussion?
Yes, you have to adopt it at two consecutive meetings.
Okay, so when I look back and I'm just, you know, Okay, so when I look back and I'm just, you know, I'm open to being wrong on this, but in our March, on our March 5th council meeting, the ordinance that we adopted in that meeting, now this is the online packet, so maybe there was something in person and I'm, you know, I've got four kids, so maybe my memory is failing me here. But it's, it's completely different from the ordinance that we have in front of us, both in the digital packet and, you know, the consent agenda item that we removed to place here and then in the print document, printed document that I have in front of me. So I just want to make sure I'm tracking or I'm not tracking on this.
Okay, and I'll let the city manager to address that, or the clerk?
I guess I would need to see, go back to the packet so I can take a look at what the differences are, so. If you got it.
So that, so that one that we approved in March says, it's just literally a paragraph change. It says, "City Charter Section 3.02 is hereby amended to redesignate existing subsection 3.02d10 as new subsection 3.02d11, adopt new subsection 3.02d10 which shall read as follows. Purchase goods and services and enter into contracts on behalf of the city pursuant to authority delegated and limitations imposed where ordinance duly adopted by city councils." So that's pretty straightforward. All it does is it gives the city manager authority to do it. Now, the problem is, is that in the packet that we have in front of us and also what's advertised doesn't have that in it. And that's one of those things where if we have to do it at two consecutive meetings, we need that in two consecutive packets.
Uh huh, right. So it's not?
It's not, it's not in this version, it's not in the online version.
And so we'll go ahead and we can't move forward with it?
So I mean, it's.
Yes, and Councilwoman Bell?
So I, I, so I hear what Councilmember McCarron's saying, totally agree. But I, I do have a question in regards to the redrafting of the ordinance, because I think we asked the city attorney to review both documents and tell us what was missing, because I think there was some coordination challenges, right? But you tell me if it's right. Now, based off how the charter is set up and it has to be discussed and adopted twice, Irene. But to Councilmember McCarron's point, that section is missing, but also there has been an addendum to it, which is it looks like they changed section 2.2-8, subsection C and D have been added and the language is completely different. So maybe, maybe there's a way, I don't, I'm just trying to see clarity on how that was done and do we have to start back from the, from the top? Because they are completely different because of the additions and then the language is missing.
Yes, so city attorney, can you let us know in terms of what we need to do from procedural?
With respect to the charter amendment, the same charter amendment language needs to be adopted in two consecutive meetings. So it sounds like, I, you know, I don't, I can't speak to what was presented and adopted in the March meeting. My understanding is that the city manager ordinance was ready, amending the charter was ready to be adopted for the second time at today's meeting. But it sounds like the correct version of that ordinance, amending the charter, was not included in the agenda packet. And if it's the council's practice to not consider adoption of ordinances that differ from or are missing from the agenda materials, then I would recommend deferring this item until the next month and essentially restarting the amendment procedure.
Okay, and city manager, Jones?
Yes, Mayor, so the, the copy that I'm looking at was in the packet. Now, if it was changed, I certainly don't have a problem basically pressing reset and starting over and having you guys approve it consecutively based upon what we currently have today.
Well, I'd be happy to prove it's in the packet, but I don't see it in the online packet. Tell me if I'm missing it somewhere.
Yes, Councilwoman Bell?
So something is, uh, city manager Jones, Senator Jones, if you go and look at the, the document that's in the packet and then look at just the sections on the 2-8, there's something called string, prohibited.
Stringing prohibited.
And then it says, "City Attorney to approve contrast." And that's not in the online version, nor was it in the original version that we discussed last Tuesday. And I could be wrong.
Nope, it wasn't, you're right.
But those are like two, two changes outside of the Jamie mission.
Yes, and I do recall that there was a question, I think Mayor, you had brought up the stringing and he added that, so this would be different based upon the requests that were made for amendments to the original draft that was presented.
But see, that's why I asked Attorney Irene, because we asked for those things from the city attorney, do this process have to start back over? Because those are just addendums to the procedural of that section so that we would have more insight over what was occurring and into what the city manager, it has nothing to do with her spending, more so is who's getting the information, how much is prohibited. Those are, those are amended processing things from my perspective, but you tell me.
Right.
Right, I think that the, if there have been substantive changes made from the first reading, then it should be deferred and the process should be restarted. If they're just administrative matters that don't change the synopsis of the ordinance as advertised, in other words, the notice that ran in the legal organ reflecting that the charter would be amended, then you can adopt it now. But it sounds like there, there may not be clarity with respect to what version was previously adopted.
No, we asked, once we saw the first one from the March and we had the work session, there were some pieces that we discussed with Attorney Quinn to make sure that he incorporated for, again, the streaming piece of it that wasn't there before. So procedurally, should we just go ahead and start the clock again? Or because of those changes, we can go ahead and vote tonight? We just want to make sure in terms of the clarity that we're good.
Right. What changes from the, I understand from the work session to the regular meeting in March, there may have been changes made to the documents. Have there been any changes made since the first adoption?
No, we're talking about the charter, we're not talking about the charter change at this point. We're talking about the code change.
Right.
So that, there's not, there's not a change to the charter version, but the charter version wasn't in our packet, so I don't think we can do it tonight. We're talking about the change for the anti-stringing section for 28.
Right.
Okay, just amending the code provisions, you can adopt those changes tonight.
Okay.
With respect to the city manager's spending.
I'm fine with adopting the code changes, but.
But isn't 8F related to the charter, not the code?
Madam Mayor, if I may. So I think we may be, and I think there was confusion in our last meeting and work session over this. Again, I think we're talking about two different documents and maybe those documents have, either in our minds or in actuality gotten sort of shuffled together. So the first changes the charter itself, which is what we're talking about tonight. You know, we needed to have a second reading tonight, which was much shorter. It just changed, I believe, city charter section 3-02d10 to allow us to create an ordinance that would specify the purchasing authority. Basically allows us to create a procurement policy. Because right now, the city manager can't purchase anything on her own, it all has to run through council. And so then I think, I think, I could be wrong, I think what we're looking at that's, you know, that the print handout that we have is only the, the ordinance that basically defines all of that. So we're basically allowing ourselves to define it in detail. That was the item that needed to be on the agenda tonight, it's much shorter. And then this, I think what we're looking at here that was modified, once we have that in place, we can, we can tweak this, it doesn't need to go through two readings and adoptions. I think that's where we're getting our wires crossed.
So city manager, I just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
From what, Councilman Perkins, the documents that we have? So the one that we're talking about, that we have as 8F? That is the one that is the charter change? That we have to proceed with that? That has been updated or modified for that one?
Ordinance 495, yes.
Okay.
The charter change.
So the charter change?
Yes.
Has been modified?
Right, based upon the comments and the request made to the city attorney last Tuesday.
It's not a charter change?
I think it is. They're outlining spinning and contracting of 40.
Right, so based on that?
I'm looking at ordinance 495.
Yeah, the one that's in our packet is not the charter change.
Yeah. So I would, you know what?
We were talking about.
We don't have to worry about that one.
Look at the item numbers, can y'all do the item numbers? Because 7B was deferred to 8F.
Right.
7B deals with the city charter, not the administrative delegation that the city managers have already to purchase. So if y'all can say 8A or 7B, we may all be on the same page.
Okay, so I just want to make sure from the city manager.
So we're on 7B?
Right.
That was deferred to 8F.
Eight, okay, I'm talking about 8F.
Right, which is 7B.
Which is 7B. What you have before you has not been changed.
Okay, so that one has not been changed?
Right, the one that was changed was eight, the original 8A.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so are we all on the same page?
Y'all see?
Well, the change is the stringer, anti-stringer section, right?
No.
Yes, if there, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If there is any question?
I'll weigh the weight.
I would recommend that we put this off because I don't, I, I, I'm not sure that we're able tonight to deal with this. At least, I'm not able tonight to deal with this. I would need to see the documentation that shows clearly the distinction between these two things and whether one has been changed or the other.
Okay, well, unfortunately, you were not at the work session and I respect that. But the changes that are on this document under streaming, stringing prohibits and all of this stuff, we asked for it. And we wanted, and it was a consent item because we were going to vote on this on a consent agenda contingent upon these changes and we have those. So now to start over is just a little over the top.
But we're the, my understanding, and this is why I'm so confused, is that in March, we approved a version of the charter change.
Right.
And if I'm correct, the city attorney is saying there can't be any substantive changes in the charter change. And I'm hearing that, yes, there are changes.
No.
No.
But what about the stringing as council members?
So Attorney Irene?
Yes, okay, I think I see where the lack of clarity is. There is a charter amendment that was read and adopted in March.
Right.
And it is before the council or the intention was to put it before the council again tonight. It sounds like there may have been, that the charter amendment itself was not included in the agenda packet for this meeting and I, I'm not sure about that. But if it has not changed substantively since the last meeting, it can be adopted.
Okay, so from that?
If you want to read, we could read the language aloud to make sure everybody's considering the same.
Stringing part is a change to the code section, not to the charter.
That's right.
That may be the source of confusion.
Right.
But the other, so I guess I have two questions. We could read it aloud and it would be the same, but we haven't advertised it properly in the agenda. So can we still adopt a charter change that hasn't been properly advertised in the agenda? That I'm hesitant about.
I don't want to do that.
And then the other thing I'm hesitant about is I would normally be fine with adopting the, what's seven, what was 7B, but what is now 8F? But the problem is, as currently adopted, it would contradict the charter.
Right.
Because we haven't changed the charter yet. So I, I think we just push both of them off because we don't have, we needed the charter change before we do.
Right.
8F, so.
So I would prefer that we defer this to the next meeting, go through the whole publicizing it and everything else and make sure that all the numbers and everything match up. So that way, from a records perspective, that the citizens and everyone else will know exactly what we did and so any type of changes or updates will be consistent. And is that the pleasure of the council? Councilwoman Bell?
So I have a counter recommendation.
Okay.
Due to some of the events that we just heard from city staff in regards to us discussing this, I do not want to defer this until next month. I would be open to a special call that will be sooner, where we can get this modified and rectified and take a vote on this, but I'm just reluctant because of all of the upcoming events and I don't want to delay it a whole month.
Okay, so we can have a call meeting if you want to in terms of, if that would be the pleasure of the council?
Well, does the charter amendment require two votes at regular meetings?
It requires a rating.
Yeah, the charter amendment requires that the language be adopted at two consecutive meetings and there is a time limit on it. You may be able to set a special call meeting within the timeframe, but I'm not sure when the advertisements will run. So I'd have to look into that tomorrow and advise about whether it's still possible to hold a second meeting or adopt it at a special call meeting.
Well, if you just said from a charter perspective, it has to be two regular council meetings.
I, right, I believe that that's the case. And so it couldn't be adopted at a special call meeting.
Right.
So can we get a check on that? Because Irene, you initially said meeting. And now the word council meeting has been added in front of it and I want to make sure. But if it can be done at a regular meeting, that we proceed with that timeline that's allotted? Because I'm sure we can get it in the paper within 24 hours.
Right.
Yeah, well, I will be glad to check on that and advise tomorrow with respect to the timing and whether it's possible to adopt it for the second time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At a call meeting.
So if you just double check MUNI code to see for us, can you just double check in terms of our charter process, in terms of that piece of it?
Oh, it's a, it's a, yes, I ask you, give me just a minute, I can look. It's an issue of state law, but I'll, I'll, give me just a moment. I'll see what I can, if I can confirm that language.
Oh, we're not going?
Yeah, it's two regular consecutive meetings, so it can't be special call. It's in, it's in 30, OCGA 3653.
So let Irene check it, because I read, the amendment charter may be authorized at any regular meeting of the members or at any special meeting called for that purpose.
But that, I thought it has to be two consecutive.
So that's why I would prefer the city attorney to confirm it. And then that way, we'll all stop talking together, councilwoman. Thank you. I'm just trying to make sure we, we'll wait for her to do that. Because again, this is a change and so if we have to wait, we'll have to wait.
Does she need more time though?
Yeah, let's not, let's not, we don't have to, we don't have to decide this tonight. We just have to know we can't do it tonight.
Right, that's the thing, is that we can't do it tonight. We can go ahead and we can't do a call meeting unless she finds out otherwise and then she'll let us know.
Let's just defer.
Okay, so I'm, take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion.
Okay.
A motion that we, a motion that we defer.
I move?
Oh, sorry, I move that we defer item 8F. Make sure I get the language right on this. To adopt, to adopt ordinance 495 by the City of Clarkston to amend the city charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city to our next regular scheduled work session and council meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we defer item 8F, adopt ordinance number 495 by the City of Clarkston to amend the city charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and to enter into certain contracts on behalf of the city into the next regular council work session and meeting. All in favor, oh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion pass. Then the next motion is?
Move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Most, media adjourn.